I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Southbridge Town Council on Monday, October 18th, 2021, at approximately 7:12 PM here in the McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is two to five on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number two, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow, excused.
I'm excused.
And Counselor Joe Vance, excused too.
Yep.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steve.
Present.
Seven present. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, October 4th, 2021. Second, any changes, submissions, additions, deletions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? And one extension, 601. Agenda item four, subcommittee reports. General Government, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, we don't have, we haven't had a meeting since our last council meeting, however, we do have one scheduled for Wednesday, the 20th, at 7:00 PM in the Veterans Room. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good, thank you. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not had a meeting recently, but I am tentatively scheduling a meeting for October 26th. And on the agenda so far is the Dresser Hill Road issue and Town Hall carpets. Thank you.
Very good. Item C is Education Human Services. Counselor Joe Vance is absent. We'll move on to item D, Planning and Development. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a meeting on the 12th of October. Agenda items number nine, 11 through 15 are on there tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Agenda, I'm sorry, item E, Protection of Persons and Property. Counselor Lazo.
No report at this time.
Thank you very much. Chairman's announcements. I have one announcement for this evening. I was, I had the pleasure of attending the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration at the Senior Center last week. Good food, great music, lots of dancing. Very pleased to see the celebration that was going on. Definitely an event worth noting, and I hope it does nothing but grow bigger and better as the years progress. That's all I have. Item six, Town Managers' Announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also attended the Latino Senior Group National Hispanic Month Celebration. It was the first time in my career I got to give a talk as an administrative official in Spanish. They endured my Spanish, and we took a photo at the end with the proclamation, and I did receive a nice thank you from Severina Rios for both you and I attending that day. You neglected to mention, we both attended the retirement celebration for Holly Cristo, who had stepped down from her services at the library, and we had a proclamation and said a few words that evening as well. I have from the Chief of Police a reminder. It was posted on social media as of, I think, Friday, but he told me to, just as a reminder, the horrible parades tentatively will be starting at the Old Wells Junior High at 5:00 PM on Sunday, October 20, excuse me, October 31st, and progress down Main Street towards the Common. Trick or treating will follow townwide from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. There is to be announced a trunk or treat event at Henry Field. As was the case last year, the safest way for everybody to celebrate Halloween is to stay home, but we realize this is important for many families, so everyone is encouraged to use social distancing and masks wherever necessary, and if you do not feel well, please stay at home and follow all advice and guidance from our Board of Health as well as the CDC. I also have an announcement from the DPW Director. It's also on our homepage of our website. We are seeking bids for various plow sizes and other snow clearing equipment for drivers and operators. Incentives include a cash bonus for any plow vehicle that responds to all storms. Those details are included in the bid specifications, and we will also be seeking bids for the rental of a four-foot wide skid steer, the equipment only for the use of DPW, and again, that's posted on the town website. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I regret omitting that retirement party for Ms. Cristo. It was well-attended. A lot of people there who care very much for her and for the work that she's been doing, and she definitely is deserving of the proclamations that she received. She's done great work for the town for well over 20 years, and definitely appreciate it. Thank you. Item seven, Presentations and Swearing In. I don't believe we have anything this evening, as far as that goes. Okay. Item eight, Citizens' Form. Are there any citizens in the audience that would like to address an issue tonight that is not on the current agenda?
See, Joe, I told you I was gonna be part of the meeting. I just wanted to let people know about a situation that's going on in Sturbridge.
Move the mic, please.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to let people know about a situation that's going on in Sturbridge, where developers aim to purchase 300 acres off of Breakneck Road to build a sports betting and thoroughbred racing venue, and the citizens have been basically left out of any of the decision-making. And it's going to the town meeting, the Sturbridge Town Meeting, on October 28th, which will be at Tantasca. And there will be several demonstrations against the Agricultural Entertainment Center. So if you'd like to join any of them, there's one on October 21st, outside of Shaw's, from 4:00 to 6:00. One at, on 10:26, from 4:00 to 7:00, at the Common in Sturbridge, and on 10:28, at the town meeting, at the Sturbridge Town Hall, from 6:00 to 8:00. And if anybody's interested, I have these papers. I'm not sure if there's a website, but I would just Google it, like Sturbridge horse racing thing. I know there's a bunch of things on Facebook about it, and I'd be happy to get anybody this flyer. Okay, thank you. Bye.
Would anyone else like to address the council at this time on an agenda, on an item not on the agenda this evening? Very good. Moving on, please, to Agenda item number nine. Vote to confirm the appointment of Pamela Paquin to the Planning Board effective immediately through June 30, 2024. Ethics are in good standing.
So moved. Second.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, we had a meeting on 12 October. Ms. Paquin was voted, recommended to the Town Council 4-0, and the affirmative.
Very good. Any discussion? Counselor Lazo.
I would just like to comment quickly on this. We're always looking for people to get on boards and commissions, and Pam put her name in. I know her personally. I think she's a stand-up person as far as serving on a board. I got phone calls. They were concerned with her right-to-farm opinion, and I personally think that that would be an asset to the Planning Board. I'm not a big fan of painting Planning Board members all of the same cut and cookie cutter, the members. That's why I've always said this council works very well with the cross-section of members it has. So for myself, I am gonna be supporting Pam Paquin. Her family's been part of the fabric of Southbridge for as long as I've been around. I know the Ellis Road area is Paquin country, and we all have a piece of it now because, as she says, Pepe is no longer with us. But I would just like to wish her best of luck on the Planning Board. Anything we can do for you when you get there, we'll be here. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I opposed the appointment of Ms. Paquin to the Planning Board, and I said at the meeting, I have nothing personal against Ms. Paquin, but I do oppose her position on the right-to-farm bylaw. In my opinion, that bylaw would make a radical change in the character and nature of life in Southbridge. I look at some of the problems that I have with this right-to-farm bylaw in Southbridge and as little as a half-an-acre of land. I'm not against all farms. I'm just against farms on an urban area like Southbridge, over every street corner. There is problems with the fiscal costs. It assumes that the town would have to do inspections. The agricultural, the farmers would not have to pay any fees. Environmental costs. You would have stormwater runoff from farms. I noticed in our right, in our stormwater bylaw, there's an exemption for agriculture on the proposed management bylaw. And also, there's a social impact with noise, dust, and odor pollution, and including, you know, the raising and slaughtering of farm animals. And also, the bylaw requires home sellers to disclose to potential buyers that Southbridge is requiring, that Southbridge is a farming community. So the reason that I am opposed to it because of her support of this is I think it's a conflict of interest. Now, at the last General Government Subcommittee meeting, I asked about the exemption for farms and the right-to-farm bylaw, and I was told by a member of the Agricultural Commission that the right-to-farm bylaw was dead. So then I watched the October 5th Agricultural Commission meeting, and the right-to-farm bylaw was the only agenda item, and they spoke about it for over an hour. So it was not exactly, was not exactly being very honest with me that it was a dead issue because it was talked about for over an hour. Looking at the conflict of interest laws, even if there's an appearance of a conflict, which would be acting in a manner which would make a reasonable person think you can be improperly influenced, is prohibited. And I know that Counselor Adams said that one person on the Planning Board isn't gonna make a difference. So then why do we have conflict of interest laws, if that's the case? And it's very simple for Ms. Paquin to simply, according to the open, conflict of interest laws, simply put it in writing that she would not discuss or vote on the right-to-farm bylaw while on the Planning Board, and that would be fine with me. Then I would support her position. And until I see something like that, I won't support it. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Ryan, then Counselor Lazo. Very good. Counselor Lazo.
Just, I agree with a lot of what Counselor Marquetti is saying. The conflict of interest law is, when the issue comes in front of the person, they are the ones that have to recuse themselves at that point. You can't recuse yourself before an appointment. You get appointed, if you run yourself into the conflict of interest with an issue, you have to recuse yourself at that time. And I just want to put one twist to this. I don't agree on everything Pam Paquin stands for, but I don't think I agree with any of the counselors up here 100%. I think that's why government works well right now. We have good people in government that don't get personal. But what's gonna happen with this, with this appointment, I think what we have to keep in mind is, when you talk about a farm bylaw, she can work on that farm bylaw seven days a week. That farm bylaw is confirmed by the Town Council. We'll have readings, three readings. We can amend it. We can knock the tin, as we always say, and find the common ground we need on some of these bylaws that come forward. So yes, the Planning Board, they do a lot of work. I think she'd be an asset to the Planning Board, but at the same time, I'm voting for her because she isn't the standard cookie-cutter person that you put onto a board and commission that goes along to get along. She's gonna be, I think, good for the Board, and I think we have our role as a council for what comes out of Planning Board. Thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I'm supporting Pam's nomination tonight to this because, as it's been pointed out, she has put a lot of good time into, whether or not you agree or disagree with her on the pet, on the farm bylaw, she's put a lot of hard work, and I could see her taking that same work ethic and putting a different perspective in town planning. I think Counselor Lazo's right. This is not a normal person you would think to appoint to this type of board, but she will bring a very unique perspective that I think will be very helpful in determining a lot of these decisions. So I have the utmost confidence in Pam to be a fair and good teller of judgment, when to recuse herself and when not to recuse herself. I also like to point out that the conflict of interest re, applies more on if there's any sort of, like, financial or personal benefit to it, not if, because she's worked on a policy in the past on another board, that that would preclude her from on this board being on it. Now, if she's still on it, that you can say there's a conflict because you can't vote on two boards. That's one thing. But if she's, until the situation presents itself, I don't think it's fair to categorize this as a conflict of interest because it hasn't occurred yet. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a correction. Thank you, Counselor Marquetti, for bringing that up. Counselor Marquetti sat in for me, or sat in on the PND meeting, so it was a two-to-one vote. My apologies. So thank you. I will say I'm voting for Ms. Paquin tonight. I don't know, I don't think it's a conflict of interest, the fact that she has a personal agenda of her own to get things pushed through the town. I think all of us have ran on personal agendas that we want to see, from schools to curbside to anything else out there. We've sat on boards in the past that, you know, have changed those ways within the town itself. So I would say, you know, if that time comes, I think that's something that she would have to address with the ethics lawyer and to make sure that it's proper. And just like most of us do when we do feel that inkling of possibly a conflict of interest, I do, I sit up here and say the same thing. I think I've received a few phone calls, but the fact is, you know, maybe some of these are hot-topic items, and, and, you know, it rattles a little bit of cages, but, you know, if it can make the town better in the long run, that's what we're looking for as counselors. And when I bring up the fact that, you know, one vote, I agree, you know, where do you go from that point on? But that one vote, you know, there's nine of us sit up here, and we make that decision, and, and I think she's gonna be the best individual at this point for the Planning Board that needs a little shakeup, that needs a little bit of, you know, difference of opinion sometimes, too, at the same time. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Marquetti.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to follow up that, you know, the appearance of a conflict of interest really has nothing to do with money. Money has nothing to do with it. It could be no money at all. It, and also, a municipal employee, whether elected or opponent, can avoid violating this provision by making a public disclosure. An appointed employee must make the disclosure in writing to his appointing official. We are the appointing official. So as I said, I know that everybody has a conflict, but if you want to avoid the conflict of interest, then you put it in writing that you will avoid talking about or voting about this right-to-farm bylaw. And that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor of appointing?
Roll call, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Katrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
No.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
And Counselor Steve.
No.
I have 5-2, and the affirmative. 5-2 in the affirmative. Ms. Paquin is appointed. Confirmed. Agenda item number 10.
Mr. Chair, I just didn't know if you wanted to, Ms. Paquin is in the back here.
Oh, very good.
I know it was my lead.
Would you like to say a few words, please?
Hi. Thank you for all your hard work. I hear you had a meeting before this, too. I wanted to come tonight. I have to get back home to help my daughter with her homework, but I really appreciate the work that you do. Obviously, I've been involved with the town through the Agricultural Commission for the last three years, and my family have been farmers in Southbridge for over 100. So while farming and agriculture mean a lot to me, obviously, that's one very small piece of what the Planning Board does. And my past, which many of you don't know, back for the last 25 years, has been working with municipalities and governments on sustainable practices, sustainable development. So we're looking at water. We're looking at energy. We're looking at military issues. And I look forward to bringing that knowledge back into my folders of practice on the Planning Board, and I'm very excited. I think we have an amazing board. I'm very much looking forward to working with all of them, and really going from Agricultural Commission, which, as you know, has no right to vote on anything but merely to suggest, to sitting on a board that has some real power to shape the town for the better. And I am constantly seeking out counselors on issues, as many of you know, and I will continue to do so because I really value your experience. And having only lived in town myself for seven years, obviously, I'm still just getting to know Southbridge. So thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate it, and I'll see you soon.
Very good. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to pass over Agenda item number 10 and move on to Agenda item number 11. Number 11, Vote to Ratify the Host Community Agreement between the Town of Southbridge and LabX Group LLC regarding the Siding of Independent Marijuana Testing Laboratory at 393 East Main Street, Southbridge, Assessors Map 44, Parcel 006.
Could I, before we go further, could I ask why we're passing over this one?
Because of circumstances that were unforeseen when I, when I made the agenda come together to begin.
So it's not coming back tonight?
No.
All right.
Counselor Ryan.
Mr. Chair, I will be stepping off and recusing myself on Agenda item number 11 due to my direct working for Green Meadows Farm LLC, a marijuana dispensary cultivator and product manufacturer.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, did we have a motion on this here?
No.
No.
Okay. Do you want a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion in your favor.
Thank you. I believe we have a short presentation by LabX.
Was there a second? Second, yeah.
Mr. Chair, before, before they move on, I just wanted to make note, it was a 3-0 vote at the Planning and Development Subcommittee meeting, favor of.
Very good. Hold the microphone. There you go.
Thank you all for your time tonight. I'm a representative of LabX Group, and I also have my partners with me behind me. We do have a short presentation, and we'd love to hear your questions after. So like I said, here, LabX, we're gonna be located at 393 East Main Street. We are planning to be a major player as testing grows, which means more business for the town, more jobs for the town, and bringing jobs to Southbridge. So like I mentioned, our team, I will have them introduce themselves, starting with the card of honor.
Chairman, distinguished members, thank you very much. First of all, let me thank you ahead of time for giving us the opportunity to be able to present to you today. I am the Chief Executive Officer of LabX. I want to give you just a little background on myself. For the last 35 years, I've consulted with companies on success. I'm not a cannabis expert. I am a business success expert. What we have done is hired the right people, brought the right people in to be able to stand on three pillars. We stand on community. We want to do everything that we can to partner with the Town of Southbridge to make sure that this community grows and that it takes this industry and grows with it. The second pillar is entrepreneurialism. We're not only coming in with the, with the understanding that we're going to be a major player in this industry, but also help the, the town, but also to, to help with ancillary businesses, to do education, to do training and development, to bring entrepreneurs into this town, and to keep entrepreneurs here. And then the third one is to make sure that in the cannabis industry, there is safe, reliable, testable products and services, and that we are basically the gatekeeper. What we are really commissioned to do is to make sure that if you're going to have cannabis in your communities, that it's gonna be safe, that it's gonna be right, it's gonna be regulated, and that's really what we're looking to do. I'm gonna thank you again ahead of time for giving us that opportunity, and I'm gonna pass the, the mic. I'm gonna try to be as brief as possible. Pass the mic on to Tyrone Gomes.
Thank you, Town Council. My name is Tyrone Gomes, and I am, I guess, a little bit of an expert in cannabis. I've been in the industry for 10 years. I have three cannabis licenses in Los Angeles. Started off during the medical days in California, and I've been doing for the past three years, as a founding member of Greenlight Business Solutions, I've been dealing specifically with licensing and regulatory compliance. So one of the things that we've had the pleasure of do, being able to do is be a contracted vendor for the CCC. So when it comes to regulation, we're, you know, very knowledgeable. That's what I'm gonna bring to the lab is kind of my relationships and my ability and my experience coming from the bigger markets. I'm excited to answer any questions that you guys might have after the presentation, but I wanted to keep that brief. Thank you again.
Mr. Chairman, distinguished gentlemen, I want to say, my name is Keith Boyd, and I am the COO of LabX, and what I bring to the table is 20-plus years in the pharmaceutical industry, particularly working for Fortune 500 or Fortune 50 companies, Merck Pharmaceuticals, focusing on their global vaccines, working for Johnson &amp; Johnson with their Aethicon Indo Surgery Team, as well as Medtronic with their cardiovascular team. And my roles in those, those companies has been sales, marketing, and training, and management. So what I bring to the table is SOPs, Standards of Operations, to how do you get something expeditiously through the process. And to Rico's point, we are the gatekeepers. If you were to look at how many facilities there are here in the state of Massachusetts, there are roughly 290 locations that encompasses the entire industry. Only three labs for the entire state of Massachusetts. There is a bottleneck, and that's a, that's a, that's a huge problem for the consumer because there is an issue of getting things through the system, and we want to stand in the gap. You have to have someone who can stamp and say that that product is good or bad, because we don't want our children, or we don't want our elderly, or anyone consuming these things without first knowing ahead of time that these things are safe. So it is our job to be that gatekeeper, to be the trusted voice of opinion. Thank you. We enjoy, enjoy our presentation.
Thank you. And then, my name is Jessica Landris. I am an attorney, so I am the legal side of all of this with the men behind me. I've been working in cannabis for two and a half years now. I have the legal background. I've been working on creating policies as well as criminal justice reform. So to give you a little bit more about our location, we don't plan on doing much the outside. We don't want it to be known that there's a cannabis lab here. It's going to be very under the radar. The entire outside will be white. There won't be the two garage doors that are currently there now, and this will result in less traffic as well, as we're gonna be having less people coming to the facility. Also, by having these two doors blocked off, there's now two more parking spots in front of our facility. The inside of our lab is going to look like this, so we're gonna be having techs working in the stations, and just a little layout of what it's gonna look like inside. So unfortunately, the entire location, you guys will not be able to enter as it is closed to the public. Only registered agents are going to be allowed in, which means they have to go through a background check through the Cannabis Control Commission before they can even start work at our facility. We are going to have cameras monitoring the entire facility 24/7 with a backup for 90 days, as well as additional lighting and keycard access to all the doors as well. As I mentioned, we're gonna have some parking in the front, as well as parking in the back of the facility for all of our registered agents. We will have some staff working from home as well, so we aren't worried about parking. We plan on having two shifts a day, so we won't have that overlap, and also offering green incentives for our employees to carpool in order to combat this a little bit more as well. The back of the building is gonna be used for pickup and drop-off of product, as well as the front door. Those, again, will be keycard access only and not open to the public. We're currently working on our security plan and talking with the police chief as well, and the fire department. So this is our facility. It is the backside of this piece of property. The parks that are near us are over 2,000 feet away. We're over 4,000 feet from schools. We meet all the buffer requirements, except for there is one non-residential property that is classified as a residence, but no one is currently living in it, and it's 109 feet away on the other side of the Napa Auto Parts Store. We plan on being open from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and closing early on Sundays at 6:00 PM. early on Sundays at 6:00 PM. So we do know that there are some concerns when a cannabis facility comes to town, so we have taken steps to mitigate that already, such as security. And as I mentioned, it will be monitored 24 hours, seven days a week. The access-only licensed agents are going to be coming in. It will be closed to the public entirely and nuisance. We will follow all state laws, all cannabis laws, to make sure that there is no excessive light, excessive noise, excessive smells, or anything like that as well. We do also want to be a good neighbor, so we are committed to Southbridge, not just coming at a business and coming into Southbridge, but also giving back to Southbridge. So we plan on hiring locally, and not all of our jobs need lab experience or need a science background. So with our staff of about 30 individuals, we plan on having 30% of that be residents from Southbridge, which works out to about nine individuals. We also are going to be working with local waste disposal to make sure that we aren't creating too much waste in the back and that we have our own pickup scheduled, as there will be a lot of waste. And we also plan on using the local businesses in addition to the waste, and these businesses will come from the Southbridge Partnership and working with them for some of our programming. We also intend to give the tax revenue to Southbridge, which we know always helps, and then being eco-friendly as well with our lighting and all of our systems. So giving back to Southbridge, we have a success program in place in which we want to use Southbridge Partnership businesses and help them embrace the community across Massachusetts. I apologize. We want people to help, we want to give people the opportunity to obtain interview and work apparel, so we know that there are many businesses in Southbridge that offer some of this, so working with them. We want to help individuals who have been disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs write a cover letter, get a resume, and get into jobs in the industry as well. So we plan on using all of the resources available in Southbridge to help with this. And again, we are really excited to be in Southbridge, and we look forward to working with the Southbridge community. We'll take any questions, and any of my team will answer.
Counselor Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I wasn't able to attend this meeting, unfortunately. Had I known it was remote, I certainly would have. So my question is this. In Worcester, there is another company that's called LabX. And Jessica, is that a conflict at all? They're a Vivarium Equipment reseller, and the name looks the same as it's spelt, and yet there's two different entities. So I want to be sure that there's no conflict.
Yeah, there's absolutely no conflict with that business. They are not operating in the cannabis industry at all. We've talked with the Secretary of the Commonwealth, and we are all set there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One question I noticed that came up to me while you were talking is that, since you're building in an old garage, how do you plan on dealing with the fact that there's quite probably contamination there? I said that the fact you're building in an old garage has probably contamination there. Have you tested for it yet? Because you're going to have to. It could be an issue. Hopefully, it's not, but it could.
Yeah, no, we haven't, we haven't tested in the back for contamination, but our laboratory has to have accreditations, and it's going to be built in a way that will mitigate and prevent airborne pathogens or contaminants from affecting our samples. So we don't anticipate, like, you know, environmental, but we, obviously, we would have the ability to do any testing that we want to, but we don't anticipate that affecting our sample process, our testing process.
All right, Counsel Lazo.
Yeah, I welcome to Southbridge. I know that this council's been pro-business and a council that's always looking for partnerships, and I think you're very professional here tonight. There are good questions when you deal with an old garage, I mean, construction. I understand what the question is. But I think in looking at your design and looking at your packet, I don't think there's a, what's going to happen to that building is going to be containing the existing building. It's not like you're building out from the main building. It's pre-existing, unconforming, and then you're going to retrofit the garage to the lab?
That is 100% correct. We'll make sure that anything that is a concern, we have to obviously test for that. We're governed by the ICO 2017, blah, blah, blah code, which requires us to make sure that from floor to ceiling, everything is contained and controlled. Tyrone had said was, part of our process is that we're filtrating the air inside the lab through these vents. We'll have UV lights to make sure that we don't have any bacteria contaminants that could cross and compromise those samples.
Well, I'm going to be supportive here tonight. And the construction portion, I know they're, they're more regulated than any other unit that would walk in there and, or business. But I wish you best of luck. We're out here for you, and I'm glad we're going to join the partnership.
Counsel Steves.
Um, yeah. Do you have any particular timeframe for doing the work and actually starting business?
Yeah, absolutely. So right, hopefully, if we're approved tonight, we'll start going through the special permitting process, and then at the same time, we'll also be submitting to the Cannabis Control Commission. We plan to have provisional from them in the first quarter of 2022. Plan to start build-out immediately after and hopefully be open in the second quarter of 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mark Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. At the subcommittee level, I did ask you about exactly what it is that you do. Maybe it'd be a good idea if you could explain that tonight for any residents out there that might be watching this. I wouldn't want anybody to think that you're, you know, a testing lab where somebody can go in and you will give them some marijuana to test it on them. So maybe you could just explain exactly what it is that you do. That would be, might be helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, yeah, we find that a lot of people are not really familiar with the analytical lab. There are two types of lab in cannabis. One is a lab that extracts and sells, like, extraction material. They're like a product manufacturer or an extension of product manufacturing. And the analytical lab is a little bit different. In almost every state, except for Oklahoma, it's a section of the industry where if you are involved with the lab, you really can't be involved in any plant-touching businesses. So there's no conflict of interest there. And the whole purpose of it is they are kind of, like, you might have heard us say the gatekeeper a couple of times. Let me put that into context. So the CCC needs to make sure that everything is tracked and traced for safety from seed to sale. How they do that is by using METRIC. It's a track-and-trace system, and almost every state is using it. In order for something to land on a retail shelf and be made available for sale, it has to go through testing, a series of testing, like heavy metals and moisture content and colony-forming units. There's a lot of different potential contaminants that could be in a cannabis product, and because it's being inhaled or consumed, we really need to make sure that this stuff is meeting the minimum requirement. So to answer the question, the lab is responsible for making sure that anything that lands on a retail shelf, on a cannabis retail shelf, is adequately tested. And if something were to go wrong, then they report that immediately to the regulators, and then the regulators can quickly, through METRIC, trace anywhere else that particular batch has been and kind of contain it. So if it went off to this one, and this company, this product manufacturer bought some of that batch, and this one bought, and they tested at different labs, well, if this lab recognizes there is an issue, the regulators can immediately go into METRIC, track every single gram, you know, from its origin, and put a hold on it. And then you got to go through the process of either remediation, if it's a contaminant that can be remediated, or the entire batch has to be destroyed.
And then, one, just one more question, if that's okay. One of Counselor Adams' members asked a pretty good question, I thought, and I think it bears repeating, when she asked, how would you get the product to your lab? I thought it was a pretty good question. If you'd like to answer that one as well.
Yeah, thank you. Great question. So in some of the bigger markets like Colorado and California, the responsibility, thank you, the responsibility of picking the samples is on the lab. Here in Massachusetts, it's a little bit different right now. Now, it could change, but as of right now, plant-touching licenses can, cultivators, they can, they can actually drop off their samples themselves, or they can mail them in. What we intend on doing is offering a white-glove treatment, similar to what you see in the bigger markets, where we actually come and we pick up the samples ourselves. We think that it's, it's a good way to have an ethical practice. We want to set up a camera. We want to do random selections, so if you have a huge batch, we want to pick one from over here and over here to make sure that we're getting an accurate, you know, representation of that batch. So that's what we're planning on doing, and we think that it could give us a competitive edge because we think it can cut down the lag time. In some of the bigger markets like California, it takes three days to get your testing results back, and what we're hearing, what happens a lot in Massachusetts is it could be three weeks, three weeks to get your, now, I'm sure that sometimes it's not quite three weeks, and sometimes it's more than three weeks, but on average, we're hearing three weeks. We also know that labs in Massachusetts make up 1% roughly of the active labs, 1% of the industry, so 99% of the industry is forced to go through, you know, that 1%. So it could be an incredible opportunity for not only LabX, but for the town of Southbridge.
And one last question. And how many people are you expecting to employ at your lab?
We're thinking around 30 if you include, because we're going to have a science team. Obviously, that's the core of the business. We're also going to have an office and sales support. We're going to have remote reps in the field. And then we're going to also have people that work from home, you know, marketing, branding, people that work in admin and finance and stuff like that, so. In the ballpark of 30.
Okay.
Two shifts a day, something like three shifts a week, so.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank their team for coming up here, not only presenting the other day at the PND, but also tonight as well. Very professional, as we expected, and I just want to say thank you. I do, I know Counselor Katrona mentioned it was a remote meeting. It was not a remote meeting that we had, so I want to clarify that. And I look forward to working with you and the town in the near future. So you've got my support 100%. Thank you.
Counselor Steves.
Just to clarify what Dave was just saying, I think Counselor Katrona is referring to the posted advertised remote hosted community agreement, a public hearing meeting, which I noticed was an issue too, because it was, they did this one day, but it actually was like two days later, because I tried to log into it too. I don't know what happened with that. It was a misprint or what, but unfortunately, I couldn't do it the second time, so.
I will mention that question was brought up, how the turnout was. I guess there really wasn't a whole lot of turnout there. Unfortunately, for remote, sometimes that does happen. I know at some of the retail public hearings, there are at least a dozen to 18 people that were there. So unfortunately, you guys didn't get the brunt of the public. But again, I want to thank you very much for doing what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Counselor Steves.
Um, yeah, actually, this is through you to the manager. Just a quick question. I don't think our bylaws specifically address this, but is there anything in our rules or regulations or bylaws that say how many facilities of this kind or marijuana facilities in general can exist in Southbridge? I know cultivators, I want to say, is, oh, sorry, sales facilities, I think, are like four, but the others, I don't know if there are limits on any of those.
I may defer if he disagrees with my answer, but Mr. Ramsey will come up with the mic, but I believe we only have a cap, as you say, on retail establishments. We can have four HCAs at any one given time, and the others, we, it's just on an ad hoc basis, they come forward if we approve, so there's no cap.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call vote.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Mark Hedy?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan recused herself. Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Six all, the motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to town. Good luck. Good luck in dealing with the state.
Agenda item number 12, vote to approve extending the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, CDBG-CV, Micro Enterprise Assistance Grant, and Quabog Valley Community Development Corporations, QVCDC, agreement from December 31, 2021 to June 30, 2022, and authorize the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was voted 3-0 favorably from the Planning and Development Subcommittee.
Any discussion? Counselor Mark Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the town manager. I have asked in the past for a list of corporations that are receiving these, micro enterprise grants. I think I've only received about four names so far.
So when you, I anticipated this, and I looked back, and the last time that I had an exchange with Ms. Dean, I had inquired the last time in June, and that was the last one I'm aware that we received. And each time Ms. Dean provides me someone, I've emailed it to the council, so I'm not aware that we've received anything unless, unless I missed an email, but I'm usually pretty good about that.
All right. Well, I just, I looked on here and I saw, through you, Mr. Chairman, I saw 12 approved. I didn't think there were 12 names that I received, but it could possibly be. I'll have to go back and take a look at that. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just further discussion during that meeting. It talks about the memorandum, Ms. Dean's memorandum about additional funds. That probably won't be the case if we approve tonight, and I could be wrong because it may have changed by then, but it looks like out of that $250,000 that we're approved for, for the region, we have about $56,000 left. And I believe, according to the memo, there's like 29 possible applicants for that remaining amount. So obviously, it's gone in the right direction. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? We have one opposed. Counselor Mark Hedy. Item number 13, motion passes. Item number 13, vote to approve the use of $50,000 in American Rescue Plan ARPA funds to design a rail trail concept from Dudley to Sturbridge and allowed use based on the interim rule, page 38 and 41, to help address public health and negative impacts of COVID in Southbridge, and allow the town manager to enter into agreement with BSC Group Incorporated to do the work.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the second. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That also went to the PND Subcommittee, 3 to 0 in favor of. Thank you.
Very good. Discussion. Counselor Mark Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. At the subcommittee level, I did ask the question about the rail trail, specifically about the liability. And I know that this went back, the rail trail was started, the whole plan had been started in January 2018, and the town received, I think, $800,000 in federal aid. The state kicked in an additional $200,000 for a total of $1 million. But the problem was that the whole project was, the town council at the time decided not to be, move forward because of the liability of the rail trail. The state owns the land. They were willing to lease it to the town, but the town was going to have to assume the liability for any cleanup and contamination on the trail. There was also some problems with the erosion on the trail, so the council at the time decided not to go forward with it. I did go back and I looked at some of the emails from Matthew Dischardon concerning the project. So I mean, my question was simply, simply, are we, have we been released from the liability or not? That was my question. So far, I don't think I've gotten a good answer on it, and so that still is my question. Are we released from liability on the rail trail or not? Simple as that. Thank you.
Very good.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for allowing me to speak on the subject. If I may, through the chair, I would love to be able to just give a quick few bullets and then hand it over to our consultant, BSC Group. So... Uh, so I apologize for the, um, poor quality of my connection last week. I was quarantined from home and I know that the phone call didn't, uh, go through very easily. Um, we are, uh, it seems as a body, I am responding to you as a body, um, in your interest to see the rail trail, uh, developed. And so I have made it my intention to find any way forward, find out where the sticking points are and how we can get around them. And so we recently hired BSC Group. Uh, we, uh, raised, uh, $5,000 and, and the goal was for them to maybe be the broker and figure out between us and Mast dot, how, you know, how and what we can do to find an agreeable compromise. Um, the rail trail is, uh, a lease. We will never be completely, uh, released from liability when we lease the rail trail. However, there are measures we can take. And so just to make sure we're all on the same page, I got on the phone today with who we've already been working with, KP Law's, uh, real estate attorney, Katie Klein, Heather with DPW, BSC Group are, um, you are expert in rail trails. Um, and, uh, wanted to make sure that this, that we all agree, yes, this is the, the smartest way forward with the goal of going for those one-time EDA outdoor recreation funds, applications due in March. And so if we can put together a plan and come up with a compromised solution, uh, to be able to sign the lease agreement and get the feasibility study, we'll position ourselves to apply for these funds. If we don't get the funds, then we are still positioning ourselves to potentially ask Mast dot to put us back on the tip. So it's sort of a, you know, hopefully, um, it's, it's the right move no matter what. Uh, and so I understood your question was, is this premature? Uh, and so I will leave it to Bill Paley with BSC Group to continue the conversation.
Thanks. Good evening, counselors, everyone. Uh, Bill Paley with BSC Group. Uh, I've got probably 20 plus years in designing trails, dealing with DOT, dealing with local funding, tip funding. So I've kind of been through the, the mill, if you will, so I understand the process. Um, Peg is correct that, um, DOT isn't going to allow any municipality in the state to be, they're going to make them take on all the responsibility of anything on the trail. The question really is, is how you deal with it. So, um, I've had conversations recently with the head of the bike group at DOT and it's a legal thing. They're just not going to allow any municipalities to be resolved of any liability. It's just the way they do things. It's unfortunate, but it's the way they've always done it. So there's two ways to go forward with this. One is if the town decides to go local funding and fund this project using grants and local, their own funding, um, they take on the liability of whatever's in that trail. What's typically in the trail bed is typical contaminants that you would find over thousands of them across the country. So, um, they're typically at levels where it can be either retained on site or filtered and used somewhere else on the site and just put in a place where it won't touch human hands. Um, and they also talked about capping it. That means either placing more gravel on top of that contaminated track bed or paving it so people can't touch it and get to it. Um, it's the same thing with the shoulders. You add topsoil and you seed it so people can't touch it physically. If the contaminants are at a higher level, then something else has to be done with it. Um, but it can still remain on the site. You move it to a different location, um, or a different location in town or on the site, and then you basically cap it. If the town decides to go through DOT, so let me backtrack. So if the town decides to do that, they can still use grant money to treat that, that, move that soil, treat it, test it, deal with it. If the state decides, if the town decides to have the state build it through a tip program, um, the state will take on that responsibility during the design period and during construction, meaning during the submissions of the design and preparation and, um, survey and all those phases. DOT has items, pay items, they've got special provisions, standard provisions that deal with all this stuff, and they incorporate that into the construction documents. So even though the town is in the lease, a long-term lease with the state and the state is going to build the project, until that point, the state's responsible for all that. They deal with it through construction and then when the project's done, the liability is pretty much removed by, by the state. Everything's capped, put in a place where it's safe, dealt with, and then they hand over the keys to the town, basically. And now the town has the project and then the liability is still there technically because it's been capped. But any exposure of the trail of those contaminants to a user or a rider is gone. So either way, whether the town decides to do it on their own, you can still use those items that the state has, the standard special provisions, the details, the guidance, because DOT still owns the property. So they want that property to be protected from the public. It's just that they want it to give it to the town to maintain. Or if the state decides to go, they'll build themselves, hand over to the town, that risk is reduced, that liability is reduced. It's not zero, but it's been reduced enough so that the town can, whether they take it on themselves regardless, they can maintain that facility, um, the way that it was designed, the way that it was constructed, and there's no liability the way it was constructed. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Marquetti.
Okay. Um, again, it doesn't really answer the question. I guess we have not been released from the liability on the rail trail. Like, that's what I'm getting here. Uh, I know that the state got, uh, the town got $800,000 from the federal government for this trail. And I don't really know the specifics of what happened to that $800,000, but it seems to me if they're going to, uh, do the rail trail, then they should release that $800,000 to the town and we should use that money for this, which according to this, it's funds to design a rail trail. And I know that we already designed, we did some partial design with the guy that's doing your, your park. So I don't really know why we have to have another consulting here. It's if the town of Southbridge, if we do one more consultant, I'm, I'm not sure, I don't know how we ever survive without having someone consult this town. So if, I just don't think it's appropriate to use COVID money for this. If you, if the state's going to release us from liability and release that 800,000 and let them use that for the, for the, uh, trail. But as far as I can tell, we're still, we are still not released from liability on the trail. So I think it would be like a waste of money if we went ahead and did this and then the state says you're still liable for the trail. I don't see it. I, I think we have plenty of other areas in town that we could build a trail down by the river, somewhere else. We don't need to walk to Dudley, I don't think, if we're going to be liable for some contaminated soil. But that said, thank you.
Very good. Ms. Dean.
Yeah, um, if I could, and then Heather, just quickly respond, um, to Counselor Marquetti's concerns. Um, just quickly, uh, the, this feasibility study is from end to end, Dudley to Stirbridge. The previous design was from Dudley to the Golden Greek, not even into the downtown. Uh, the EDA funds are for outdoor recreation. Mast dot sees us as a priority corridor for connecting the two. Good news, uh, there's a virtual meeting happening next, this Thursday to put Stirbridge's section, uh, three, three miles of their section closing, um, up in, up against Southbridge on the tip. And the tip money is, uh, no longer. The tip money was off the table last year when we couldn't come to a lease agreement. So I'll just give Heather the floor.
The 800,000 that Counselor Marquetti is referring to was federal grant money that was actually started over 20 years ago now, I believe, um, really is when it first started. And what happened in 2018 timeframe, I'm not sure of the dates, is erosion was recognized on the existing rail bread and brought as an issue of one of our residents and businesses to Mast DOT and to our, um, in, basically into our knowledge too. And that something needed to be done to be able to preserve that business and the rail trail as it was because we were desperately losing a large section next to the river down there. What happened was because that money had been an earmark for such a long time, we were in danger of losing that money altogether. And the federal government through Mast DOT came in and said, we have this pot of money. Can you manage it for the towns and get a project done? And at the same time, they recognized this problem with the erosion. And that's how the two married together. We had already started some planning at the time for that rail section and that is how the tip project originally had started. That's where that 800,000 dollars has gone. The erosion control project has been bid and started, is my knowledge. The state put in additional tip funding to get the project done, but that money from the federal government went into that project to preserve that, to stop that erosion and preserve the existing rail trail that was there. That is when the lease agreement had come up because at the time we were partnering with the state, um, to try to have that being developed into a finished rail trail and they wanted us to take over the whole section. And that was when the review of the original lease had come up and the liability issues and concerns were brought. And a former, and a previous council had voted to terminate starting that because we couldn't become to an agreement on the liability issues. Um, I was part of the conversations today with the new attorney. I know that there's going to be more, um, discussions with the state. I understand the approach that they're trying to take. I think that, um, if you want a rail trail, I, and it was basically said to me back then, it is a take it or leave it lease. You take it as it is. Alls you can do is mitigate what you are taking on for liability. I do agree with their approach, but if you want a rail trail on Mast DOT property at all, you're going to have to live with the conditions of the lease. There might be some small tweaking that can be done, but it was represented to me at the time that it was a kind of a take it or leave it type of situation.
So then I think, um, Mr. Paley summed it up really well on the conversation today with Heather and the attorney that the containing it, so you know, you have a lease agreement where you can't edit your language. You have a rail trail where you can go in and you can cap and contain. And so we're taking that strategy of the capping and containing, although the town wanted previously to go the cheaper route with the, with the rail trail and try to do stone dust and try to not do as, as much capping with pavement, for instance. You know, we will do that strategy of the capping and containing to prevent any future liability. So I think that, and you said it much more poignantly, um, but, but I think we all from there agreed that yes, and with this one-time opportunity of the EDA funds, if we can position ourselves, this might be the best chance we have of doing from end to end.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes, I just, the gentleman spoke earlier of the state building the rail trail and then we lease it. Was I correct in saying that? That was an option if the state built it or if we built it?
Right, yeah, there's two options. Um, either option, the town is going to take on the lease with the state because the state's not going to sell the land to the town. They're going to lease it to them for 100 years. So one option is for the town to go after funding. That could be state grants, it could be local grants, their own chapter 90 money and other funds, funding sources, um, to build it. The town would then have to use those monies to cap and contain and cap and contain. If this, if they decide to go tip, which is the state-funded program where the town, um, pays for the design effort, usually five to 10%, and the state covers the remaining cost of the project, which could be millions. Um, and the, the trade-off is the state says, okay, we're going to build it to our standards, but during that process, the state would then take care of all of the, any contaminants, meaning, uh, capping them, finding ways to, to deal with the contaminants. And again, this trail is very indicative of, this is all of them that I've designed, where you have the typical residue and contaminants come off the locomotives that's been there in the track bed. And, um, so it's, it's not like it's, it's not a serious contamination typically. It's what you would find in the ballast. So I'm dealing with this directly with a project for the town of Ashland. They have a, a trail that's 2,500 feet long. It was an old track bed and the town's funding it through a Mass Trails grant. And, um, we knew that there would be the possibility of contaminants and the option was to either excavate all of it out and then have to test it and deal with it. So we made a judgment call at, during construction to say, why don't we leave it? Why don't we, we've got to scrape off the top, just the, the leaves and the, and the fauna, whatever it is, and just, and, and we'll test that. They screened it, it was clean, and then now we're using it as topsoil. Then we decided to bring in extra gravel, clean gravel, raise the track bed a little bit, just a little bit, and then we're going to pave it. So there are different ways to treat this, but also I want to also reiterate that DOT has been doing this for, you know, many decades. So they've created standard specifications, details, they know that you need to hire an LSP, need to test it, need to look at and treat it. So, um, they're used to this. I had this conversation with DOT last week. He knows this. And so what I'd like to remind the, the, you folks is this is a high priority project, high priority. They want this project to get built. They want the town to take over this, this lease for 99 years. This, the state is going to do everything they can to work with the town, the neighboring towns to make this project happen. So just keep that in mind. It's, it's really a gift to the town. I also walked this trail, I've seen it, I've known about it for years, it's a beautiful asset. So, you know, I, I would recommend that you consider taking advantage of this opportunity. There are ways that eco scientists and engineers can deal with the contaminants, cap it, make it safe.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Um, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, please.
Um, I'm nervous about this, uh, when they say it's a gift. I remember the DPW bond was a gift, uh, $1 million, when we were going to build a new one down at the sewer treatment plant for $3 million. And I cannot tell you what happened with the DPW bond. It was a disaster as far as environmental. There was no environmental letter from the previous owners saying they, they were, they were responsible, it was clean. Um, I think this is a different situation as far as contaminants, probably. Uh, we did experience the contaminants of this area because we dug the Woodstock Road intersection out and what they did was they replaced all, a lot of the material. That's why we end up with the, the monster bank in opposite the, uh, opposite the gas station. Um, the reason why I was bringing up whether the state would just do the job and we would lease it, the 99-year lease is what, you know, the state had and it came expired, your butters got paid off for their, their properties and stuff, so the state owns it. Uh, if it's a priority on the state side, and understand something, I'm not against the rail trail, but I'm against assuming contaminants in any form as a liability. I have a problem with that. If they want this so bad, why don't they make it a state project and make the rail trail part of the state budget or state recreation? Uh, I'm having a real hard time with this because I know what we paid for that DPW bond. I know we're saying what's in the riverbed, but nobody knows until you dig it or touch it. And when you look at it, that DPW bond escalated millions and millions of dollars over the $1 million gift we got. So I'm a little hesitant here. Uh, I'm not, I'm not against going in, maybe getting into the water, finding out how deep that water is, but, uh, caution in the wind, you know, when it's a gift. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, Counselor Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, a couple of comments. There's a lot of communities around us right now that are building rail trails and I'm curious how many others have the same issues from, or with contaminants and how they're working through the process. Now you did speak of one, but there's many from the Cape to the Berkshires that are already built and have been built in the last few years. One goes from the, the Cape to Woods Hole, or there's many in the Berkshires. How are they working with these same contaminants?
So there, as, um, Bill had referenced, these, um, standard specifications that are being used by communities, um, are either the Mast dot specifications and/or they're also using the DCR and DEP best management practices for soils near rail beds, which specifically outlines how to treat these soils. It's assumed, it's assumed contamination and how you just, you know, cap it or contain it there.
it there.
If I can continue, so, so they're, they're approving, the local communities are approving the, that's what you're saying. We, we have a lot of recreation grants in this town, in my opinion. We need more economic development and more economic grants in this town to generate business. I think this would be a great way of beginning that process, to looking for more grants for economic development. We've done a lot with recreation, and I think it's time now we spend more time, money, grants on the economic side. I will be supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, through you. So I had, I guess the same concern that Counsel Lozo had brought up about the state priority. I will say, two years ago, it was not the state's priority, because either that was a serious lack of communication between the town administration and the state itself, because we, there was constant questions about this whole process. I was on the town council when we voted no not to take that million dollars or, or to, to continue on. We kept getting the same thing, this, you've got one person working over there, one person who's providing the, the contract, and that's all you're getting? So maybe with VSC group, that changes. With Ms. Dean, that changes. With Ms. Blakely, that changes. And with the town manager, that changes. So, you know, I'm willing to give it a, a, a chance, but I will say, the state saying it was a priority, two years ago was not a priority, at least in our eyes at that point in time, because the town was held liable for the hazardous waste that had been built there over, or been laid there for, for some time. So I, I'm very apprehensive about what the state says is a priority. I hope that is true, what Bill, you've said, and I, I, no reason not to believe you, I'm just telling you from the experience that I had two years ago, it was very disappointing that we all wanted a rail trail, but they weren't willing to work with us at all, or at least that's what we were told. I know this is, I, I have a question for Ms. Blakely. We talked about the design. I know the town decides the 800 and the 100 here from the state and all that kind of stuff. We also believe we put $130,000 of our own funds in it as well for the design itself. Would that design be able, I know we have to maybe pay for 5% or 10% of the full design it's, itself or engineering study? Would that $130,000 or that previous design go into play from, from Dudley to, uh, the Golden Greek area, 131? Without having to spend more money on it?
Peg just told me that, he's already asked them to include it in the scope of the feasibility study, to wrap that previous design in. I'm sorry. I was eating candy right before I got up, so.
Part of your current scope is to include the existing design that I had done from the W Golden Greek.
So it would include it to evaluate what they proposed. I can tell you at the time, we weren't proposing to put anything, any asphalt down because it was cost prohibitive, but I think looking at what the design standards are going to be, if we do this going forward with the, basically operating under the assumption that there is contamination there and our goal is to cap it, it would be a little bit alternative design. Now granted, all the survey and all of that work has already been completed, so that does help going forward. But this is much, when we're doing this feasibility study, I think it is important to say, they're looking at it from a, the whole scope of the town and what can be done. We were never looking at it that way, we were kind of looking at it segment by segment by segment and trying to piecemeal it together. So this is a holistic approach, so that we have something to go forward for a holistic, big project, not piecemeal project in concept. Now granted, we're, it's a feasibility study, it's going to say, this is an option, this is an option, this is an option, and we're going to have to come back to you guys with, these are the options, here is the potential funding, what do you want to go for?
Do you have any more? May I continue, Mr. Chair? Thank you. Um, do you, do you have any more funds left of that 130, or did we take that capital money and put it somewhere else?
We had about 15,000 of it, and that's what we used, for instance, to
The 5,000.
And the LSP to be able to help guide us on how to go forward. So you probably have about 7,000.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that's not going to be enough to, to cover the entire new design or whatever it may be, but I just wonder if we had any money back. I guess my only other, I, I don't have a problem voting in favor of this, because I do, as Counsel Katrona has mentioned, I think this is another avenue for us to bring back the economic life of our town. Just, it's a, it's just a part of the puzzle itself. My only question, obviously, I don't think this would have gone up here without the town manager's, uh, recommendation or approval to bring up here, but again, he had brought up how to utilize the ARPA money. How do we utilize funds that we're receiving that we wouldn't have had in the first place to bring back something, or bring back an, an asset to the town economically? So I'm in support of this. I don't know if the town manager had anything to say on this, this matter at all, but I know he was, he's been pushing hard to make sure we spend this ARPA money before the end of next year. Thank you.
Fine, Mr. Chairman. I had recently sent out emails to staff members to come up with creative solutions. We gave you a brief overview of what we thought, we're looking for more detailed plans to come back to this body, just to show you where we think we can utilize this money, because we don't want to leave anything on the table. One of the things that I had talked with Ms. Dean about is, you know, whether or not we could use monies for recreation. In the most recent, one of the most recent releases of the frequently asked questions about the interim rule did address the use of recreation money, and it is for communities that are disproportionately affected economically and by COVID. And those are typically fall within qualified census tract communities. And speaking with Ms. Dean, based on our CDBG status, she believes that we would qualify. And so based on, in her memo, she talks about the two pages in the interim rule combined with the information in the frequently asked questions about disproportionately affected communities and economically challenged communities, we believe that we qualify to use some of the ARPA money for this type of recreation, the enhancement of outdoor recreation spaces. So it would fall right in line with what we were thinking early on in. You know, if you have people that are living in a condensed or, or a thickly settled area, how do they get out if they're confined to their home to get daily recreation? And I, I think this is what they've realized at, at the federal level, that if we have people that are living in a, in an urban setting, essentially, as you know, some of our neighborhoods have a lot of multifamily homes close together, how do they get out and get that recreation? So I think that is why they made those clarifications to allow it for this type of expansion of recreation uses. So that's why we talked about using this money, at least for the feasibility study, and there are options on the table. One is through the, the TIP. The other may be to try and get some money, federal ARPA monies through another channel. But if the money's out there at one time and it's only there for a while, we should try and utilize it to the best we can. So that was the thought process.
Very good. Counsel Lozo.
Yeah, just, I don't want to prolong it any further. I think, I know we want to say, well, all the other towns did it, but we're not all the other towns. I can give you, for instance, we dumped bunk oil off of the Lendsdale Gate, the pipe and the anchors are still up there, that used to go under the road into the American Optical Company when we were in an industrial juggernaut. The whole neighborhood had black soot on it when they dumped. So I think we had some different stuff coming through Southbridge than say a rural area out in the western part of the state. But in listening to Heather, our DPW director, I want to, my question is, if we go forward with the options feasibility, we would find out more information whether we really want to do this or not. I'm kind of open-minded to go to the next step, because right now I'm not feeling real good about it. I got to be honest with you, I, I've been here maybe longer than most, and a lot of beautiful projects that we wanted had vision that just didn't work out that way. So I'm overly cautious, caught, you know, maybe a little optimistic trying to say, jeez, it would be nice to have this rail trail. It would be nice to have the money to do it. Will the state give us the money to do it? Right now, we're on roads and sidewalks, and we're going great guns on roads and sidewalks. I want to continue on doing what we need to do for what's existing, not create more maintenance and more bike rails and that we can't handle what we already have. So I'm going to vote yes tonight to go to the next step on feasibility to see, is, do we really want to do this? What's the cost of this? And, you know, I got to tell you, don't ever underestimate contaminated dirt. We've seen some businesses go out of business in town because of it. Thank you.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm, I'm just going to, I'll be brief. I'm going to support the project tonight. Even before I moved to Southbridge, I was coming to Southbridge on meetings about the rail trail. This has been something that's been talked about to death, right? So this is something that has been greatly needed, a lot of citizens have wanted. I actually want to take time and thank Counsel Katrona, because he's been a longtime advocate about this and about the powerful impact it would have once it's done. So I, I'm looking forward to the options that were presented. I'm really interested in that option about the state going in and doing the work in particular, because if they sign off on it and they say, this has been contained, that provides a little less stress for the town on the liability side, because now the state has come through with their people and said it's safe. So I think we have some options here to look into, and I support this opportunity tonight.
Very good. Peg.
I just wanted to comment back to the Counselor Lozo, I heard your, I heard your concern about the, a gift. I think the language they used was they want to partner with the town, and so it's not as if they're trying to hand off the burden.
The previous speaker called it a gift.
He did, because it
And I use that word because he used the word.
It is, it, you know, it, it can be interpreted, but they used the word partner, and the gentleman, Mike, Michael Trapani, is that how you say his name? Michael Trapani? So I was working through Mass Trails last year to try to get funding for Mass Trails, and they said you can't until you get the lease. And so I'm, I've been in contact with them all along. What they have said is, although they haven't been able to put it in writing yet, they, they've said that we are the priority corridor, and it will be published soon, you know, as a, so it can be documented. And that will help our case with the EDA grant. This, this TIP or STIP project would be as a, as if we can't get the EDA funds, we would then go for the TIP. And, and just to, just to give you a perspective on dollars, Mass Trails grants are $300,000, or, you know, a little more than that. The Parks Grant that we got, $400,000. A TIP would be great, because they would cover the construction, we would cover the, the design. This EDA ARPA funding would cover full design, full construction. And if we build in those costs for the contamination, then hopefully that would be the, the best case scenario. That's my hope.
Counsel Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Couple more comments, some to the previous speakers. It's great that we're putting time and money into the roads and sidewalks, I agree. But we need the economic development and the businesses to come to town, so we can utilize those roads and sidewalks in a positive manner. I think it's important that we vote yes on this this evening. Let's see what our options are going forward, and then this counsel can make a decision then. Thank you.
There may be no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Counsel Katrona.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Lozo.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
No.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steve.
Yes.
And Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Six to one, the motion passes with Counsel Marquetti against. Item number 14, vote to accept the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities, PRC park grant, in the amount of $398,860, and vote to ratify the Parkland acquisitions and renovations program project agreement and authorize the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This also went through the Plan Development Subcommittee meeting, and it was a three to zero in favor of, recommended to the town council.
Very good discussion. Counsel Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think doing this, I think doing this is a good idea in general, although the one question I have talks about, is the, the issue about this paragraph, the first whereas paragraph, where it specifically states, so it talks about the commonwealth and the commissions, and then it jumps down to, where did it go? The other paragraph. And I, yeah, I'm not finding it at the moment, but anyway. There it is. Number two, witness, the witness at number two, the participant agrees to perform the project described above by authorizing its commission to develop, manage, maintain, and operate the project in accordance with the terms, conditions, yada, yada, yada. And I just wanted to make sure that we have, because I would think that that would mean we would need to, we need to be voting to transfer the control of this particular property to, well, the only commission that exists at the moment is the Conservation Commission. So we would basically have to transfer the control of this property to the Conservation Commission. If I'm not mistaken.
Just a second, yeah. Okay, go ahead.
If I may, through you, Counsel Chair, when you authorized the grant through the resolution, within that was the chapter language that states that you are allowing the powers to go to the Recreation Commission. And then I included in your packets at that time, back in July, what the commission's charge is, and we talked about how with the new rec director, this was a great opportunity to be able to recruit in recreation, committee or commission?
It's a committee at the moment.
Committee, Recreation Committee members. And so it's, it is not relinquishing the, the land to them, it's still within the town's control, it's, they are
Well, they're a town board.
They are, yeah, they're, they oversee the, whatever, within the charge and, and without, within the statute. But it seemed like it was fair and reasonable, and our attorney suggested that it was fair and reasonable.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that necessarily, I just wanted to make, make it clear that at the moment, we do not have a Recreation Committee or Commission.
But I'm confident that our Recreation Director is working hard to find
Yeah, I know he is. I know he's been trying to recruit people, but we need to start seeing people get, to get appointed, because we don't have one at the moment.
And so by default, if you didn't have one, then obviously, then that would reverse back to the town council, right?
Right. So I just, I just want to make sure that we don't have an issue with the grant for filing the grant for a commission that doesn't exist.
As far as, we reviewed the language multiple times with Melissa Cryon, the grant administrator at the state level. She is also the same person who was involved back when the town passed over its opportunity to have a park grant. They are eager to see the town funded for a rec project. I don't think that they would let this affect you. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Just checking, just raising the issue.
Counsel?
Yep.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Those opposed? Five to two, those opposed, our Counselors Katrona and Marquetti. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number 15, vote to appropriate $170,940 from the stabilization fund, number 840, which is 30% of the $569,800. Two-thirds vote required.
For what?
As the
This item should include a for what?
So this is a reimbursable grant, and by design, I think Melissa Zawadzki had outlined it for you last year, that you would need to first raise the, or authorize the borrowing for the entire 100%, and then you would then not be reimbursed that last 30%. This then raises it from stabilization, which Counselor Adams had gotten the balance of from Karen, is that 4.8 million right now?
Okay. Entertainer motion in a second.
Was there a motion? I, I can't hear.
No, there wasn't.
So.
No one moved the question yet.
Okay.
I need a motion, I need to entertain a motion.
I'll motion it.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Counselor Adams, I believe this was your item.
Right, it's kind of caveats off of this, the, the previous agenda item. We brought up the stabilization to, to offset it. I think Ms. Harnoy had recommended this when we, Ms. Dean and myself and town manager were looking at how to properly fund this park grant. I will say, Counsel Marquetti had asked about free cash. I didn't know if you had found out an answer on that at all. Okay. But that being said, Ms. Harnoy, our accountant, had recommended, as, as Ms. Dean had made mention, 4.8 million is still in the stabilization fund, minus that 170, 171, would leave us about 4.6, 4.7 million.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I, I, that number
I, that number, that's real, that's lower than it had been in our stabilization though, right? It wasn't the five millions for a point, wasn't it?
That is.
Councilor Adams.
Mr. Chair, thank you. That has, we've, I think we've allocated quite a few dollars to that.
I'm, thank you, Councilor Adams, for the information because it, I'm going to support this, but I'm getting a little wary of continuously jumping into the stabilization fund. That's our town savings account meant for emergencies. I understand that, you know, sometimes we have to dip into it for investments, but I want to continually see that number increasing, not decreasing. It's really important to, especially our credit rating. It, it's, it's part of the reason why our credit rating has continued to improve as a community is because we've been saving this money and we're supposed to be putting more and more to actually be matching what we're supposed, what's in our annual budget. So I just, I want to put that out there that I'm getting a little more wary of continuously dipping into the stabilization account, but I do intend to support this tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make note that that 170, $171,000 will go back, should go back into the stabilization fund and I understand your concern. That's why I asked the question, how much we had in it, how much we've used of it and how much this would take away from it. So, you know, we talked about the design in 2022, 2023 would be the construction. Once that is completed, then, then those, those funds will come back from the state and hopefully that town council at the time, hopefully there's more money in it by then, but that town council at the time should probably bring it back and put it back in the stabilization fund.
Any further discussion? Very good. Roll call vote.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Lazo?
Yes.
Councilor Marquetti?
No.
Councilor Ryan?
Yes.
Councilor Steve?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
And Councilor Katrona?
No.
It's not two-thirds. The vote fails. It's going to be a two-third vote. We're going to pass over item 16 for the rest of the evening. We won't come back to that. Item number 17, amend Chapter 7, Section 7-406, owners and agents of property abutting required to remove snow by law. To read that snow removal time from the sidewalks be increased from 12 to 24 hours. To be read at three separate readings as recommended. The third and final reading is today, October 18th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'll read the amended item. 7-408, owners, agents of property abutting sidewalks required to remove snow. No owner or agent of an owner of premises abutting upon brick, concrete or other curbed or other finished sidewalk shall place or suffer to remain for more than 24 hours upon cessation of the, of the snowstorm, any snow upon such sidewalk. Very good. Any amendments? Item number.
You have to put it on it.
Yep. Item number 18, vote to approve the amendment to Chapter 7, Section 7-406, owners, agents of property abutting required to remove snow by law. To read, no owner or agent of an owner of premises abutting upon brick, concrete or other curbed or other finished sidewalk shall place or suffer to remain for more than 24 hours upon cessation of the snowstorm, any snow upon such sidewalk. Roll call vote, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Lazo?
Hold on.
Oh.
Are we having a discussion?
Okay. Councilor Lazo is excused.
Was there a motion on this one?
Yes, I made the motion and he seconded it.
Yep.
Could I just ask a question?
Certainly.
There were some residents at the general government subcommittee meeting that asked that we lower the fines in this bylaw. And I was wondering if we could amend it somehow tonight or should we wait for the general government subcommittee meeting? They did ask that we reduce the fines. They thought it was a little high, $100 in the first calendar year, 150 in the second calendar, second offense and $200 for the third offense. They thought it was a little too high.
I think that's a valid point and I have background information on that. I'm prepared to bring the subcommittee to examine the situation and then bring it back to council again as need be.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilor Ryan?
I just would also, yeah, I, I think that's the best way to move forward on that. Since the amendment is only about the snow removal, we didn't make a motion or recommend on any other change of it. Since we've only been reading that portion of it, to now go and amend the penalty schedule would be, in my mind, improper because we haven't been reading the entirety of the bylaw to reflect that change. We've only been reading that specific section. So I'm fine with it coming up at the chairman's suggestion at subcommittee, but I feel that would be the more appropriate way to handle it.
Okay, that's fine.
Very good. Anyone else? Very good roll call vote.
Councilor Marquetti?
Yes.
Councilor Ryan?
Yes.
Councilor Steve?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Katrona?
Yes.
And Councilor Daniel?
Yes. Item number 19, second reading of the proposed new stormwater management bylaw, Section 8-500, to be read at three separate meetings as recommended. Second reading is tonight, October 18th, 2021. I believe we have a technological advantage.
Good evening. With the assistance of the Cable Commission, we are going to play a recorded version like we did last time. Hopefully it'll be a little bit shorter and then we'll take any comments.
of one acre or more of land, or one, total cumulative added impervious surface meets or exceeds five thousand square feet, two, land disturbance totals of volume of over one thousand cubic yards of soil, three, project occurs in a critical area, four, land disturbance occurs in sloped areas, open parentheses fifteen percent slope or grade, closed parentheses, five, imperviousness is increased to over fifty percent of parcel area. B, the following land disturbance activities are exempt from the requirements of this bylaw. One, normal maintenance and improvement of municipal own public ways and related infrastructure. Two, normal maintenance of land in agricultural use, as defined by the Wetlands Protection Act Regulation three ten CMR ten point oh four. Three, repair or replacement of septic systems when required by the Board of Health for the protection of public health. Four, normal maintenance of existing landscaping, gardens, or lawn areas associated with a single-family dwelling, provided such maintenance does not include the addition of more than a hundred cubic yards of soil material, construction of any walls, alteration of existing grades by more than one foot in elevation, or alteration of drainage characteristics. Five, the construction of fencing that will not alter existing terrain or drainage patterns. Six, construction of utilities other than drainage, open parentheses, gas, water, electric, telephone, et cetera, closed parentheses, that will not alter terrain or drainage patterns. Seven, activities conducted in accordance with an approved Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation Forest Stewardship Plan. Eight, regular and approved maintenance of stormwater management structure. Nine, emergency work to protect life, limb, or property. Eight dash five oh one point one point five, ultimate responsibility of discharger. A, the standards set forth herein and promulgated pursuant to this bylaw are minimum standards. This bylaw does not intend nor imply that compliance by any person will ensure that there will be no contamination, pollution, nor unauthorized discharge of pollutants into waters of the Commonwealth caused by said person. This bylaw shall not create liability on the part of the municipality, or any agent or employee thereof, for any damages that result from any discharger's reliance on this bylaw, or any administrative decision lawfully made thereunder. Eight dash five oh one point one point six, authority to enter, inspect, sample, establish sampling devices, and test. A, to the extent permitted by law, or if authorized by the owner or other party in control of the property, the authorized enforcement agency or other agents, officers, and employees of the Department of Public Works may enter upon privately-owned property for the purpose of performing their duties under this bylaw, and may make or cause to be made such examinations, surveys, or sampling, as the authorized enforcement agency deems responsibly necessary. During any inspection as provided herein, the authorized enforcement agency may take any samples and perform any testing deemed necessary to aid in pursuit of the inquiry or to record site activities. B, the authorized enforcement agency may require by written notice that any person engaged in any activity and/or owning or operating any facility which may cause or contribute to stormwater pollution, illicit discharges, and/or non-stormwater discharges to the municipal storm drain system or waters of the Commonwealth, undertake at said person's expense such monitoring and analyses, and furnish such reports to the town as deemed necessary to determine compliance with this authorized enforcement agency. C, the authorized enforcement agency may suspend municipal storm drain system access to any person or property without prior written notice when such suspension is necessary to stop an actual or threatened discharge of pollutants that presents imminent risk of harm to the public health, safety, welfare, or the environment. In the event any person fails to comply with an emergency suspension order, the authorized enforcement agency may take all reasonable steps to prevent or minimize harm to the public health, safety, welfare, or the environment. D, filing an application for a stormwater management permit grants the authorized enforcement agency and his or her designees permission to enter the site to verify the information in the application and to inspect for compliance with the resulting permit. Eight dash five oh one point one point seven, regulations. A, under the powers granted by Chapter six, Section two dash one of the Home Rule Charter of the town of Southbridge, the director of public works, acting as authorized enforcement agent, and his or her designees, shall from time to time propose to the town manager adoption of, or amendments, or revisions to rules and regulations to effectuate the purposes of this bylaw. Said regulations may include, but shall not be limited to, provisions regarding administration, application requirements, fees, permitting procedures and requirements, design standards, surety requirements, inspection and site supervision requirements, waivers and exemption, and enforcement procedures. B, a true copy of the rules and regulations with their most recent amendments shall be kept on file, available for inspection in the office of the inspector of buildings, in the office of the director of public works, and in the office of the town clerk. C, failure by the authorized enforcement agent or his or her designees to promulgate such rules and regulations shall not have the effect of suspending or invalidating this bylaw. Eight dash five oh one point one point eight, severability. A, the provisions of this bylaw are hereby declared to be sever. If any provision, clause, sentence, or paragraph of this bylaw, or the application thereof to any person, establishment, or circumstances shall be held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the clerk provisions or application of this bylaw. Eight dash five oh one point one point nine, transitional provisions. A, owners shall have sixty days from the effective date of this bylaw to comply with its provisions, provided good cause is shown for the failure to comply with the bylaw during that period. Eight dash five oh one point two point zero, illicit discharge detection and elimination. Eight dash five oh one point two point one, prohibited activities. A, illicit discharges, no person shall dump, discharge, cause, or allow to be discharged into the municipal storm drain system, watercourses, or waters of the Commonwealth any pollutant or non-stormwater discharge, as soon as a person responsible for a facility or operation, or responsible for emergency response for a facility or operation, has information of, or suspects, a release of materials at that facility or operation resulting in, or which may result in discharge of pollutants, or illicit discharges into stormwater to the municipal storm drainage system or waters of the Commonwealth, the person shall immediately notify the authorized enforcement agency and take all necessary steps to ensure discovery, containment, and cleanup of the release. B, illicit connections, no person shall construct, use, allow, maintain, or continue any illicit connection to municipal storm drain system, regardless of whether the connection was permissible under applicable law, regulation, or custom at the time of connection. C, obstruction of municipal storm drain system, no person shall obstruct or interfere with the normal flow of stormwater into or out of the municipal storm drain system without prior written approval from the authorized enforcement agency. Eight dash five oh one point two point two, exception. A, the following non-stormwater discharges and flows to the municipal storm drain system and to waters of the Commonwealth are exempt from the prohibition on illicit discharges, provided that, in the opinion of the authorized enforcement agency, the source is not a significant contributor of pollutant to the municipal storm drain system or to waters of the Commonwealth. One, potable water line flushing. Two, uncontaminated pumped groundwater and other discharges from potable water sources. Three, landscape irrigation and lawn watering. Four, diverted stream flow. Five, rising groundwater. Six, groundwater infiltration to the municipal storm drain system. Seven, uncontaminated foundation footing drains. Eight, uncontaminated water from crawl space pumps. Nine, air conditioning condensation. Ten, uncontaminated non-industrial roof trace. Eleven, natural springs. Twelve, individual residential and occasional non-commercial car washing. Thirteen, flows from riparian habitats and wetlands. Fourteen, dechlorinated swimming pool discharges, open parentheses, provided that the chlorine content is less than one part per million, water has been allowed to stand for one week prior to draining, and that the discharge is performed in such a way as not to cause a nuisance, closed parentheses. Fifteen, street sweeping waters. Sixteen, flows resulting from firefighting activities. Seventeen, water from dive water tests with written authorization from the authorized enforcement agency. Eighteen, non-stormwater discharges permitted under a NIPDs permit waiver or waste discharge order administered under the authority of the United States Environmental Protection Agency, or a surface water discharge permitted by DEP, provided that the discharge is in full compliance with all requirements of the permit, waiver, or order, and other applicable laws and regulations, and provided further that written approval has been granted by the authorized enforcement agency for any discharge to the municipal storm drain system. Nineteen, any other non-stormwater discharge that are not a source of pollutants to the municipal storm drain system nor waters of the Commonwealth, as set forth in a written determination by the authorized enforcement agency. Eight dash five oh one point three point zero, stormwater management and erosion control. Eight dash five oh one point three point one, permits and procedures. A, no person may undertake land disturbance activity regulated by this bylaw in subsection eight dash five oh one point one point four applicability, without a stormwater management permit from the authorized enforcement agency pursuant to this bylaw and regulations promulgated hereunder. B, permit procedures and requirements shall be defined and included as part of any rules and regulations promulgated as permitted under subsection eight dash five oh one point one point seven regulations of this bylaw. Eight dash five oh one point three point two, fees. A, the authorized enforcement agency shall establish fees to cover expenses connected with application review and monitoring permit compliance. The fees shall be sufficient to cover the costs, town secretarial staff, and professional staff time for the review, processing, and monitoring and application and permit. B, the authorized enforcement agency may require the owner to pay reasonable costs to be incurred by the authorized enforcement agency for the employment of outside consultants pursuant to regulations as authorized by MGL, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three G. Eight dash five oh one point three point three, surety. A, the authorized enforcement agency may require the permitty to post before the start of any land disturbance activity, a surety bond, irrevocable letter of credit, cash, or other acceptable security. The form of the bond shall be approved by town council, if necessary, and be in an amount deemed sufficient by the authorized enforcement agency to ensure that the work will be completed in accordance with the permit. If the project is phased, the authorized enforcement agency may, in its sole and absolute discretion, release part of the bond as each phase is completed in compliance with the permit, but the bond may not be fully released until the authorized enforcement agency has received a final report stating that all the work has been satisfactorily completed as required in the regulations. Eight dash five oh one point three point four, waivers. A, the authorized enforcement agency may waive strict compliance with any requirement of the rules and regulations promulgated hereunder, where such action is allowed by federal, state, and local statutes and/or regulations, is in the public interest, and is not inconsistent with the purpose and intent of this bylaw. Section eight dash five hundred, stormwater management. Eight dash five oh one, stormwater management. Eight dash five oh one point one point zero, general provisions. Eight dash five oh one point one point one, title, purpose, and intent. A, this section shall be known as the Stormwater Management Bylaw of the town of Southbridge.
Okay, does anyone wish to make any amendments to what was heard this evening? They're being done, let's move on please, item number twenty, council's forum. Let's start on this side tonight, we're usually on the other side, Councilor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things, first of all, I did receive a few phone calls this past week concerning the conditions of the roads and crosswalks during the construction. Many residents were concerned about the lack of sidewalks and crosswalks, no ramps, loose gravel on the roads, making it difficult for people on bikes. I even heard that there was a person in a wheelchair that had a problem and got seriously hurt trying to navigate a crosswalk in town. I've also heard from some residents who their streets were started, and a month later they weren't completed. I think High Street was one of them, I know that, I got a call today from one of them saying that High Street has been paved. But the question was, why they started one job and didn't complete it, it seems logical to me, you start one job, you complete that job before moving on to something else. I know we're doing something good with the road improvements. The roads in this town have been neglected for at least two decades, and I know they need fixing, milling, paving, and the roads are gonna look nice when they're done, but the question is, when are they gonna get done, before the snow falls? So, the DPW Subcommittee meeting recently, the members really hit the nail right on the head, they said they think there is a lack of oversight. So what can we do about it, because I don't want to go through another year of this, I know there's gonna be some big projects coming up next year. Is it West Street first and then South Street? It's South Street first and then West Street? And there's gonna be the regular road improvement program that we've started this year, so I really don't want to see this happen again. I hope that we can start a discussion at the DPW Subcommittee to get someone on board, as, to hire somebody to oversee the road constructions in this town. I think it's really needed. I know the DPW Director called the downtown a shitshow during the meeting, I was quite amazed, and I don't want to see that again. I don't want to see the type of construction that was going on down there this past summer with missing sidewalks and dirt in the roads, so it's gotta stop. I hope that we can get somebody on board who can oversee the road improvement. The second thing I wanted to bring up, and I'll let her respond if she wants to, I don't want to, if she wanted to respond, that's fine.
I don't recall saying it was a shitshow, so if I did say that, I, it was, it's a very difficult project, it's a very complex project with lots of moving parts. Unfortunately, as a town, and when you hire a contractor, you can't dictate their methods and their means. You can suggest, and you can request, and you can ask them to address situations that you find, but we do not have control over their schedule, and we can't dictate their construction methods and means. They have their own methods and means, and as long as they are within their contract and their contract timeframes, and doing what we've asked them to do. It is construction, and I know it's very inconvenient, it's inconvenient for me, too, I understand, but when you take on these major construction problems, there is gonna be inconvenience. As far as the other roads, and when they're going to get done, they have been work in progress, and some of those things are scheduling, and again, you award a contract, and you give a timeframe for the work to be done, the contractor gets to elect on how he's going to do it. We did request the contractor stop opening up any additional roads until roads are completed, because we had concerns, so that's how we can address it, because they're not authorized to proceed until we say, okay, now you can. In an ideal world, yes, they would have already been, you would just finish one until you moved on to the next. When you do construction and you open up roads, it's never ideal, so we ask that everybody be patient with us, and we're moving forward. We made good progress this, over this weekend, I did come in and saw that we were making very good progress up in that High Street area. We still have some areas to finish on High Street, it is not complete, they do know they have to come back, they couldn't get it all done in one day.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, like I said, I'm glad we're doing the roads, just would like to see some better oversight, next year I hope we can get somebody who has some expertise, has some knowledge of roadwork, and can at least be there to watch the jobs that are going on, so thank you. The other thing is, I saw this notice about the Northeast Energy Facility, and it looks like they have a tentative okay to build their plant on one sixty-nine, that's the way, I was reading it online. The thing that kind of disturbs me is every time they want to build something in Charlton, it's always right on the line with Southbridge. So hopefully, you know, we, they want to put things right on the line with Southbridge, but when they want to put a brewery, they put it way out on the other side on Route twenty, or if they want to build Amazon, they put that on the other side of town, but they want to put something that could hurt the environment, they put it right on the line with Southbridge. So, I know we're gonna have to be providing them with something, some water or something, so I would like us to at least be a little bit, I guess, tough on who we sell our water to, and what we charge for our water, because that is something that we have here in Southbridge that Charlton does not have, and so I would appreciate it. The last thing I wanted to mention, and I know that we have discussed this before, and I know that you're, through you to the town manager, I know your position on this, but I don't want to just leave this hanging, and that's just on the police and fire insurance coverage, I know we have talked this, about this before, about those who are on disability. I thought we were going to do something with some kind of out-of-pocket expenses, the only thing is, I just don't want to see this just left hanging. I know this is something that Councilor Adams was also involved in, so if we could at least talk again about it, have some more discussions about it, and see what we could do with regard to the insurance for disabled police and firemen, I would appreciate it. And other than that, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
I just wanted to comment, you were talking about the LNG plant in Charlton, so I have had conversations along with the fire chief all along to ensure that we're going to get the equivalent type of training that Charlton gets, because we'll likely be first responders, but I also wanted to mention that they, the sighting board that had a meeting on October sixth, we got a notice that it's been continued, part of it to this coming Thursday, we just got the notice at the end of last week, I've asked that they be put up in English and Spanish, but that will be a remote participation, it should be up tomorrow, so it's a continuation of their sighting board, but we are tracking some of those issues. We have a new treasurer now, in the interim, till, you know, we settle things, we're still working on some of the insurance, I'll talk to her about that other issue as well.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Very good, Councilor Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, a few things this evening, one is, and it's clarification on remote participation, and I'm not picking on any one meeting, but there were a couple recent, and I don't know if this council needs to vote on remote participation, but one being held on, and I'm not here to debate it, I just want clarification, because I would have liked to have attended, one was held on twelve of October, and the other was held on oh seven of September. So I just think if we're gonna have remote participation, and there was someone that called in to both meetings, that's remote participation. How much clearer can we be? I think we need clarification, or we need to post that when we post our Subcommittee meetings, or our council meetings even. If someone is going to call in to that meeting, or to have the ability to call in, then it needs to be opened up to everyone to be called in, so that others can have that opportunity to participate if they so choose. Moving on, we have a meeting scheduled with Education Human Services, and I would ask the Chair to take a look at items number five and six, I believe they belong with general government, one is budgetary, and the other is capital, so I'd like the Chair to take a look at both of those. Couple more things, and I know through you, Mr. Chair, through the town manager, and thank you, Councilor Marketti, for having a meeting on Dresser Hill, I know it's going to come up, the residents up there are... The residents up there are getting frustrated. I'm hearing from the residents, getting calls that nothing is being done. Well, I encouraged them all this evening, especially at least two that I've spoken to today, to call the Town Manager directly and have a conversation with them, and let them know your concerns. If you have water draining into your yard, into a hole, and you're upset, call the Town Manager. Or driveway concerns, or water runoff concerns. Call and talk to the Town Manager. You're a taxpayer? The town signed off on this project? They need to take responsibility. Thank you.
Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'll be very brief. We had the opportunity to go over to the library last week and catch this interesting Klezmer show. Kind of, it's not something that I would normally listen to, but it's always good to see the kinds of variety that Margaret and the Cultural Council bring to the library. So that's nice. And also the Sunday before that was the last of the Concerts on the Common with Island Castaway, so that was fun. Kind of an interesting contrast. And the only other thing I wanted to point out is, if you're interested in kind of the spooky, Ghosts of the Berkshires, I forgot the name of the writer, but the author is going to be talking at Jacob Edwards Library on Thursday, and that's a lot.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, just to kind of jump off that point, I did want to mention since EHS did, the chairman's not here today, we do have a meeting, I believe it's for six thirty if I am correct, and the receiver's going to be there. If people, citizens want to ask questions of the receiver, that would be a good time to go and be there and make your voices heard. I'm going to be there, and I'm sure many, if not most, of the councilors will be there. So I think it'll be a very informative evening, and that's it, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, a couple things. Veterans Day Ceremony is going on November eleventh, twenty twenty-one, at the World War Memorial Park at eleven o'clock. So this is my invitation to the councilors and the rest of the public. I want to thank the DPW and all the first responders for all the hard work they're doing, trying to get our community back. You know, eleven years ago, I came to this community, a lot of work had to be done. So I do see with this council that a lot of work has been being done, and I appreciate it, and people, I will say, I've heard from a couple residents wanting specific dates when Main Street's going to happen, and as a counselor, it's my responsibility to tell them that, you know, what I've received from the DPW Director, and that I can't give them specific dates, because in reality, that's not right. So I will say thank you to the DPW, I will say thank you to the police and the Fire Department for all the hard work that they've accomplished and done over the past few years that I've been on council. They deserve more than a pat on the back half the time, and not so much criticism or micromanagement, so I just want to push that out there. Lastly, I don't care if you don't want to debate, you brought it up in front of the cameras. So, I'm allowed, okay? I'm allowed, so is every chair, to invite a guest. If I wanted remote participation as the Chair of the Subcommittee, I would have posted it as remote. I would recommend councilors contact the ethics lawyer, I'm sorry, the open meeting law lawyer, and get clarification before we go in front of a camera and open our mouths. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, was that a personal attack or something?
No, you won't. None of you will.
No, Mr. Chairman.
No, no. Come on, that's not devolved here.
Well, could I speak, please?
No, I've got the floor, thank you. Item number twenty-one, discussion of next meeting, date Monday, November first, twenty twenty-one, at seven PM.